Testing, testing, okay. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is 5:09 on June 1st, 2022. Mr. City Clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Potem Jimenez?
Here.
Councilor Matoris?
Here.
Mayor Cobos Coflin?
I am present.
Mayor, let the record reflect that Councilor Melendez and Councilor Peralta will be absent from today's meeting.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Staff does have a few changes to the agenda this evening that we'd request council support for. Staff would request to cancel all three closed-session items, as well as number eight, the code enforcement update, and then item 10, regular business. So if that is acceptable to council, we'd move right to the regular session.
And this motion would require two of the three?
Yes, staff would request just a motion and a second, and then consensus. These will all be brought back at the next meeting.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second it. Okay, Mr. City Clerk?
Mayor Potem Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilor Matoris?
Aye.
Mayor Cobos Coflin?
I vote aye, and that carries three all.
Thank you, Mayor. And that does take us to a closed-session report. That takes us to invocation.
Please, I don't see our Reverend.
Oh, we're probably early.
How about we go with our pledge first, and if the Reverend comes, then we'll...
Sure, when the Reverend gets here, we can do that, sure.
Our pledge is going to be by soon-to-be Parks and Recreation Commissioner Frank Gerardo and our Citizen of the Month, Manny Franco. I thought I saw him. There you are, Manny. Okay, please come to the mic. Frank? Mr. City Clerk, do you have an invocation in front of you?
Please stand if you can, please. Father, we are thankful for this day that you have given us, for its blessings, its opportunities, its challenges. May we appreciate you each day that comes to us. We pray for the strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties, for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to ceremonial with that. If my colleagues would join me down to recognize our Citizen of the Month. So I'm very happy to announce this month's Citizen of the Month, because this gentleman right here has long been a loyal servant and committed supporter of the city of Monobello through his many deeds over the years. Mr. Franco has been a Monobello resident for nearly 60 years and is an avid member of several local organizations and currently works as the Director of Creative Services for Monarch Litho Inc., one of the largest minority-owned and operating printing companies here in the United States, based right here in the city of Monobello. I'd like to welcome Manuel, or Manny Franco, as we all know him, who was born in Mexico City, came to Monobello in 1964 with his parents and four brothers. His father, after starting a successful printing business in our city, joined forces with Monarch Litho in the early 80s to support his family's business. Manny studied graphic design at Arts Center College of Design in Los Angeles and designed and received his certificate of advanced, I'm sorry, advanced advertising studies from the University of Southern California. Ooh, Trojan. As he became a respected local business leader, Manny was invited to join the Rotary Club of Monobello in 1981, where he has been an active member every day since. Monobello Rotary plays a key role in serving those in need in our community, and their dedication to service mirrored Manuel's own deep respect for Monobello and passion of public service. Over the years, Manny has served as a board member for several service organizations, including Salvation Army, Monobello Commerce YMCA, Public Safety Committee for the Monobello Police Department, and additionally, he served as Assistant Scout Master for the Boy Scouts of America and as a mentor for Monobello High School Mentorship Program. Wow, that's amazing. I don't know, how you do it, Manny? Come on. He is no stranger to awards. In 2005, Manny was recognized as Rotarian of the Year and as Monobello's All-Service Club Person of the Year. He also received certificates of recognition from California State Assembly and US Congress in the same year. Despite his own health challenges, Manuel has always persisted in giving back to his community. His dedication to serve lead in a partnership with the city spearheading the return of my own prayer breakfast event last October. Manny, we cannot thank you enough for the countless hours of time and effort you have given to Monobello. We appreciate, respect, your humility, are inspired by your unyielding service to the people of this community, and we hope that this recognition serves as a reminder to the city's continued appreciation for all that you do. So can we all please give Manuel Franco a big round of applause?
Thank you. Yes, so I can just, I actually wrote something, so I wouldn't forget.
It's okay, I cheat too.
Yeah, boy. Thank you very much. Thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Or hold it on that side.
Wow, yeah. Just to share a little bit of my journey, okay? Originally from Mexico City, as you heard, my upbringing here in Monobello was by loving mother and father who shared with, who showered my brothers and I with infinite examples of service to others. We started a small business that you've heard of already, shortly after I was invited to join an organization of very active individuals known as Rotarians. With the lead of seasoned members, I started to learn the principles and focus of the organization: service. I was exposed to others of the same mindset in the community, the Lions are Optimus, Kiwanis Optimus, and I worked closely with individuals that made an impact on me in how they exemplified these principles, such as Evelyn White, Bob King, Bill Walters, Bill Nieswanger, John Cook, just to name a few. From them, I realized that it was not about honor, power, wealth, or pleasure, but about service. May they rest in peace. In their name and in solidarity with the other recipients of this recognition, many who I know, Teresa Lopez, Rosemary Torres, Betty Peralta, Barbara Risha Watz, Shushma Patel, I invite all of you to service, what Rotarians call "service above self," for that is what fulfills. And being fulfilled makes one a better person, in turn makes our community better and our country better. I want to acknowledge my wife of 48 years for being my rock, but realize that she shies away from these type of events. And to God for allowing me to serve. Thank you for this recognition.
Our certificate of recognition says, "An appreciation for your commitment to serve our city's residents and your significant contributions to improve the quality of life in our community." Manuel Franco. And we have some goodies here. And then we'll switch.
Hi. On three, one, two, three. And one more, three, one, two, three.
Excellent, thank you very, very much. Good. You got it? There we go.
Congratulations, Manny. Congratulations. We'll do the oath, because I think I see the Reverend walking. So we'll do the oath next. You're up. Who's first on the list? Okay, and now we are going to be swearing in the oath of office for Planning Commissioner Eddie Franco.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. One, there you go. I, Eddie Franco, solemnly swear... That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the City of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any... Mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully...
That I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Of which I'm about to answer upon, I'm upon to answer.
Congratulations.
And the next oath of office is Frank Gerardo for the Parks and Recreation Commission.
What? Oh, okay. On the left hand?
Supposed to be the right hand.
Right hand.
Yeah, exactly.
We have two left hands.
I, Frank Gerardo, solemnly swear...
I, Frank Gerardo, solemnly swear...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservations.
Without any reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully...
And I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duty.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
All right.
Thank you both. And now... The city would like to welcome up the Monobello United Methodist Church. Please join me up front. You guys can all come. You're all part of the church family. Yes, come one, come all. So this, hello, hello, hello. The city of Monobello is proud to recognize the Monobello United Methodist Church for serving the community for 117 years. 117 years! We are truly thankful for, that the church does all that they do on their monthly food distributions. They have numerous fundraisers, and most importantly, for their continuous dedication and support to the community throughout the years. So beside me is Reverend Alan Kosuko. I will just say a few words.
Thank you so much, Mayor. We have here our members. We have our officers, officers of our church council in our church, Monobello United Methodist Church. And we are offering spiritual nourishment. And we have also different ministries there, like food distribution, feeding. And I'd like to invite you, it's our, it's our, our worship service started at 10:00 AM to 11:00, and then be there 11:00 to 12:00. It's our, it's our lunch fellowship. If you have your time, you can visit us there. God bless you. It's our 117th church founding anniversary last Sunday. Thank you for your presence, Mayor, and the police officer. Praise God, our chief, thank you so much. And I'd like to say to you, we are continuing to pray for our city council, to our officers, to all our officers of city council, and all officers of our city of Pontebelo. We are offering prayer for all of you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, and this is for you.
I'd like to, I'd like to give this, this tracts to all of you.
Great, we'll help you distribute. Thank you so much. Let's take a photo. No, okay. And now we're on to the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2023. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, I believe we have a presentation from Finance Director, Mr. Salarza.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, City Council. Tonight, we'll have our budget overview number two for our fiscal year 22, 23 proposed budget. Next slide, please. So for tonight, it'll not just be general fund, but it'll be all funds. A couple weeks ago, when I was up here giving the presentation, the focus was on the general fund. Some more work's been done since then. Can now present the entire all-funds budget. Review some organizational changes that are in the proposed budget, overview of supplemental requests that are included, a little more detail on the general fund revenues and expenditures, some other funds budget highlights, a little CIP discussion, and then next steps. So again, I want to thank the City Council for their support, all the directors for their support, and the support staff in each department. This has been, so far, budget number three that I've been a part of. It's been the easiest, most efficient one so far, so looking forward to next steps. Next slide, please. So this has kind of been the process so far in terms of presenting the budget. Our mid, our second quarter mid-year budget presentation, February 9th, kind of what I traditionally use as the kickoff of the budget season, gives an update of where we are in the current fiscal year, and that serves as the base for building the 22, 23 budget. We had a study session on April 8th, overview of some budget priorities and the strategic planning document. That was a two-year strategic planning document that was approved last year. Our first budget review was three weeks ago now, May 11th. Preliminary proposed budget books were distributed last week. We have our second budget review tonight, and then the plan is for budget adoption next week. Just in comparison, this is the same number of budget touchpoints we had last year for the 21, 22 budget. Again, I think it's important to recognize that there's been a couple of presentations. Again, this is following the exact same pattern that was used for the 21, 22 budget. Next slide. So an update here. Right now, we're looking at a $695,700 surplus for 22, 23 in the general fund. About $68.685 million in revenue against $67, just under $68 million in expenditures. Still doing some final tweaks, some final adjustments, but obviously in good shape if we're showing up almost $700,000 surplus for next year. Next slide. And then overall, Monobello has approximately close to a $200 all-funds budget. You'll see we have approximately $203 million in revenue against about $184 million in expenditures. And that's broken out, general fund, we have very special funds, grant, grant revenue we receive, local return funds, that's the street funds, enterprise funds, transit, our two hotels, our golf course, and then some fiduciary funds, that's our successor agency, former redevelopment agency. So in good shape overall, $19 million to the positive overall. And this funds every single part of the operation here in Monobello, whether it's our Monobello bus lines, street improvement projects, signal maintenance, self-insurance, workers' comp, that's everything there. So on the expense side, it takes about $184 million to run the Monobello organization, full services we are. Next slide. So a little abbreviated inversion here is something that has been presented a couple of times already. We have a five-year budget cycle that's been developed. Proud to be in year three of it and every year as we, as we present the budget, it gets, gets easier and easier. And we try to do our best to improve upon that prior year budget. So of the five-year budget development process, we're in year three. So more of a focus on research in terms of researching expenditure trends, researching revenue trends, doing research in terms of how best to fund programs and where to fund them. Improvement upon the budget process, whether it's budget development or just how and where we budget for things. And begin strategizing. So at some point, once we're through the five-year budget cycle, we'll be hopefully in a much better position where we start to think longer term, strategize and prioritize in our budget. There's been a lot of work up to this point to get us to here. The first couple of years of budget development, the 2021 and the 21, 22 budget, really was just kind of cleanup, low-hanging fruit. Really just trying to put things where they should be, but we're getting to a point now where year three, we can be a little more strategic with, with our budget development. Obviously, the end goal here is to have a sustainable and a stable budget. And we'll achieve that through fiscal discipline and again, working with the departments and kind of being all in this together, we will be able to achieve that. Next slide. So going along with that, budget improvements that we've had. One thing that I've talked about in every single budget is better allocating where we charge things. Prior to the 2021 budget, we were not doing a very good job of that. Yes, we charge our, some non-general fund operations administrative overhead, but we were not doing a good job of maximizing, for example, local return funds. We get several millions of dollars in revenue from Metro and we're allowed per Metro guidelines to charge salary and other administrative overhead to those funds since we spend administrative time and, and you know, James and his staff spend times, spend time doing engineering work related to capital projects. So we've been much better these last couple of years, fiscal years, of pulling more out of the local return funds to help support those services or that support, which reduces the amount that's charged to the general fund. So it's a way of increasing general fund resources without having to reduce expenditures. So by improving our cost allocation, by being smart about how we charge things, where we charge things, charging percentage of staff to our enterprise funds, much, much smarter about using general fund resources and making them spread a little bit, a little further. So just as an example here, you'll see that 40% of public works staff time charged directly to local return funds. That's $225,000 that we can charge elsewhere besides the general fund. We were not doing that prior, prior to, a couple of years ago. The same with being able to charge, for example, MCAP staff time to grant funds. Again, very important program, serves a lot of needy people. Very good for the community and we're able to reduce the impact on the general fund by wisely using the grant funds that we get from our partners at the COGS. So just some examples there of budget improvements. Next slide. So something that was touched on a few weeks ago, we've been calling this the year of public works for the 22, 23 budget. Really formalizing some organizational changes that started this year. We're moving three divisions formally now into public works. So building safety, it's moving from community development into public works. Facilities and park maintenance from parks and recreation into public work. So forming what's more of a traditional public works department. Obviously, to do this, we'll have to, in the proposed budget, additional resources to help the public works department handle all of those extra divisions. So we'll get to that a little bit more when we talk supplementals. Next slide. So staffing overview, this is historical and for the proposed budget, you'll see we have 535, 535 positions in the proposed budget. It's a 43 full-time, these are all full-time positions, full-time positions only. An increase of 43 full-time equivalent positions from last year to this year. As a note, 30 of those 43 positions are bus operators. So as part of the plan that Director Yvada brought to council a few meetings ago about a staffing plan for transit operations, that includes hiring 30 bus operators over the next couple of years. So we're adding those positions to transit now and then there's a plan to hire those over the next couple of years. And then throughout there, for example, we're adding economic development manager in community development. Again, part of a strategic goal of City Council to improve our economic development outreach efforts. Adding necessary positions in public works, like an electrician, a plumber, principal engineer, some additional positions like that to, again, help with facilities and park maintenance. And really just kind of rounding out the organization as, as you know, we progress and improving the organization and really figuring out what we need and where. Next slide. So here's a detail, got the next couple of slides, detail of all the positions being added. So for example, in fire, adding a battalion chief to oversee all the training efforts and an additional telecommunications technician. We have a multimillion dollar radio network that lots of public safety agencies rely on, not just Montebello. And there's definitely a need there for some help for our one incumbent telecommunications supervisor. Parks and Recreation Community Services Supervisor, again, help with some of the management and other duties there in Parks and Rec. You see the positions in public works, a public works manager, assistant director, principal engineer, electrician and a plumber. Community Development, there's the Economic Development Manager, adding an additional parking control officer. Next slide. And then Human Resources, an assistant director, HR analyst. HR analysts will be focused on transit. And again, as part of the hiring plan for the next couple of years, definitely will be a need for a dedicated HR analyst to help with recruitments, especially with trying to get 30 bus operators onboard. Transit, you'll see a senior analyst, a management analyst, there's the 30 bus operators and a dedicated building maintenance trade worker for the yard and associated building there in transit facilities. And then the police, a crime analyst. Again, there's a, there's a lot of data out there and right now, police department does not have a dedicated position to analyze that and to be able to produce statistics readily and reports. So that's a much needed position that most modern police departments already have on the books, so adding that. So again, that's a net increase of 43 positions. And again, some departments are actually reducing, for example, for fire, even though we're adding two positions, we're reducing two vacant positions. So there's, there's some give and take here in terms of positions that are no longer needed, that are vacant, that are vacant, not like they're not filled. So we're reducing in some areas and adding in other areas. So a net increase of 43 positions across the organization. Next slide. So talking about supplemental requests, about a million eight in supplemental requests, split almost 50/50 between general fund and non-general fund. We have about $938,000 in general fund supplemental requests. Community Development, Fire, Human Resources, IT, Parks and Rec, Police and Public Works, kind of getting various types of supplemental requests. And then even non-general fund, Parks and Rec, Police, Public Works, asset forfeiture, our AQMD clean air funds and Measure A, the park-related funding, all being used to fund the 900,000 there. Next slide. So here's an overview, Community Development, again, expanding Economic Development Department or program, excuse me, Economic Development Program. Fire, again, continuing the replacement and upgrading of their, a lot of their lifesaving equipment. Turnouts, air tanks, breathing apparatus, PPE dryer in one of the fire stations. Again, much needed stuff that we've kind of been kicking the can down the road and have been putting money towards now, you know, three years running. As part of employee engagement, organization-wide, improve employee morale, increase in supplies there to Human Resources. Actually instituting a true new employee orientation program. A lot of the additional supplemental supply money will go towards that. Some real true onboarding for our new employees. Parks and Rec, getting some much needed vehicles, Christmas tree, a new addition to our Christmas tree. Continuing the utility box beautification program, throwing resources there. And then the community garden program that was approved out of Grantrea Park. Police, about 11 new vehicles, both patrol and admin. So for example, detective and, and you know, other non, and some other non-p patrol vehicles. Some SART equipment, again, majority of vehicles in that SART equipment using asset forfeiture funds. Some software and some other consulting services. And then public works, a bunch of vehicles, the last presentation I showed some of the SARI state that our vehicles are in. There's, I think we have three 30-plus year-old GMC Seras out there that we need to replace. Signs, guardrails, uniforms, so combination of general fund and gas tax for, for public works there. Next slide. So just focusing on general fund revenue. Again, looking at proposed revenue of about 68.685 million. The biggest change here is sales tax. Big increase in projected, not just Bradley Burns 1%, but especially Measure H, kind of large increase in Measure H revenue versus prior year adopted budget. Property tax seen in assessed value increase about 4%, so still a very good growth in assessed value here in Montebello. Then you'll see throughout, kind of updates through license and permit revenue, we'll see, we're starting to, now that we have cannabis operators with actual operations now, they're actually up and running and producing revenue. We're starting to see more revenue in the license and permits area related to quarterly sales and as more new operators come onboard, the $50,000 annual community benefit fee. So increases to revenue across the board, but again, mostly in sales tax. Next slide. And then just kind of where our revenue comes from. Sales and property tax, name of the game. So again, big, large slice of sales tax. As the economy improves, as people start buying things, obviously, sales tax does improve. Some change in consumer behavior recently with, you know, everyone having to stay at home, not being able to go out and shop. So a lot of the online sales go to the county pool. So the city is actually getting the benefit of receiving more money from the county pool of transaction tax and that contributes to our overall share. So positive thing there. And then something to mention, we're currently going through a user fee study. And once those results are presented to council, an opportunity to improve our cost recovery and potentially increase revenue and charges for service and license and permits areas where currently we could be subsidizing some services. Next slide. And then since it is the largest single source of revenue, the general fund, focus on sales tax. This is a very positive, very positive slide. Looking at just over 25 million in sales tax from three different sources. The 1% Bradley Burns sales tax, about $14.4 million. Measure H, 9.4 million. And we're going to share obviously with our, sales tax sharing agreement with the Monterey Park Marketplace at about 1.3 million. And you'll see from here, the adopted budget last year for Measure H was 7.17 million. And something to put in perspective, okay, we're, we're now just in our second full year, 22, 23, the third full year of receiving Measure H. It's difficult, obviously, to project with, with no data. And then on top of that, you throw in a pandemic and you kind of wonder how that's going to impact retail sales and consumer behavior. So the first two years, obviously, Measure H is extremely conservative. You'll see the very first year was $6 million. Second year felt a little more comfortable, increasing over seven. But with actual data coming in, two years worth of trends, working closely with our consultants, we're up over 9 million in, in sales tax. So the ratio is about, for every $1 in, in 1%, we get about 65 cents in Measure H dollars. So it's about, about two-thirds of our, our sales tax revenue also comes from the Measure H transaction and use tax. Something else to, I like to point out is, we talked about a lot of supplemental budget items in the last few years of the budget. We've thrown a lot of money, much needed money at, at fire, replacing things like turnouts and ladders and hoses, real essential stuff. About two, almost $2.8 million in supplemental spending about, over the last three fiscal years. Over 53% of that has been committed to fire and police. 1.3 million of that is committed to fire alone. So it's important to point out that while a general source of revenue, Measure H has absolutely been able to support public safety, fire and police. So you know, goes out saying that without that source of revenue, not only would we not have been able to provide some good lifesaving, much needed equipment to police and fire, but there's a lot of other services here in Montebello that would have gone unfunded. So it'd be a much different budget to project and to present without 9 million in Measure H. So very, very important source of revenue. Next slide. So on the flip side of the ledger here, expenditures, just under 68 million expenditures. I shall, let's go to the next slide. Two largest shares of general fund resources, fire and police. No surprise, we're a full-service city. It's pretty common for a full-service city. You'll see public works, almost a fourth of the budget. Again, it's, it's grown with the addition of three new divisions plus taking on additional sewer maintenance work, that contract we have at LA County. So the slice of pie for public works has grown, but you'll see, you know, community development shrunk a little bit, Parks and Rec shrunk a little bit. And then obviously, the sewer maintenance contract that LA County has increased that share of the pie. And that public work share is all just ongoing daily stuff. It's not CIP. CIP is separate from, from that. This is just general fund funded operations. Next slide. So I want to also highlight some of our, our major enterprise funds. Obviously, transit, 35 and a half million dollar operation. Again, with the staffing plan, there's additional bus operators, obviously not fully funded in there. There's a plan for funding them over the next couple of years, but to include it in there. But you'll see all the different operations, administration, actual operations, corporate shops, that's the mechanics and other necessary supplies and staff to help maintain our buses. And then we, and this is supported by federal revenue from the FTA, local return funds, Metro, we see a lot of transit dedicated funding. And then some one-time pots of money, ARPA money and some still CRSA, that's pandemic-related money, flowing to the transit operation in 22, 23. So there's definitely some plans on, on how to use that. And on the flip side, what's not being presented fully here, this is kind of operations. There's grant funds received from the state and the feds that are used for various capital and other, other projects. So a large operation that, you know, obviously serves our community and other surrounding communities. Next slide. So again, focusing kind of on non-general fund areas has, has been presented for the last couple of years now, three years now. Our information technology backbone, our network, our computers in desperate need of upgrade or replacement. We've had several presentations describing the need for, for, for those improvements. At the September 1st, 21, 2021 study session, there was a, a direction was provided to use a portion of our ARPA funding for this IT backbone infrastructure upgrade project. It's a multi-year project. As part of that, what I've done in working with Director Razzo is we've created a separate fund to be able to track this, be a little more transparent in terms of tracking expenses, tracking the revenue against it. So it'll be handled like any other capital, multi-year capital improvement project, which it is. I mean, the, the presentations that have been made, the amount of hardware and software and other resources that need to kind of bring us into the 21st, 20th century, little on 21st century. Will need to be tracked over multiple years. Actually, next slide. So this is the five-year projection of the project. First year obviously being kind of the, the big heavy lift, 4.77 million dollars. And you'll see it's, it's split between hardware licenses, software And you'll see it's split between hardware licenses, software licenses are extremely expensive, especially for some of the products and software that are necessary, professional services, and then just, you know, software, kind of the software-based purchase, not the license. I need to point out that the professional services includes obviously help with implementation, help with rollout, there's some document management and some important security training, and some constant kind of ongoing security monitoring, obviously with, you know, increased ransomware and other cyber attacks, it'll be nice to know that somebody else's, who's on our side is looking out for us. So, next slide. So I took those dollar amounts, I just put them in percentage, about 84% of that first year of expenses is going towards stuff, quite frankly, computers, servers, software, licenses. So the majority of those expenses are going towards things you can, for the most part, touch, I mean, obviously licenses, software is really can't, but their productivity. You'll see about in the first year, 14%, and then gradually up to about 27% professional services. Again, it's not just implementation, it's not just the rollout, but there's ongoing professional services with security monitoring, document management, those kinds of ongoing services that are necessary to help us continue to be productive and, you know, make sure our network is secure. So a big project, very necessary, obviously, and looking forward to getting that started next year. And again, those, the first year being funded, it's included in the budget as a separate fund, offset with ARPA funds for those expenses. Next slide. And then here's an overview of the CIP program. Earlier today, you should have a printout of the little more detailed CIP program, that was also going to be mailed out to every single council member. This is just a kind of really high-level overview of where things are being funded out of, gas tax, our local return funds such as Measure M, Measure R, but there's a more detailed printout that lists the various projects and new projects, ongoing projects, and where they're being funded. But you'll see about an $18 million CIP program, just under 19 million, the program for 2022 was just a little over 19 million, so in line with the prior year's CIP program. Next slide. And then going back some of our enterprise funds, Hilton Garden Inn, one of the two city-owned hotels, showing right now, projecting about $360,000 surplus for next year. So as we move out of the pandemic, hopefully more permanently now, travel isn't picking up, just leisure and business travel, Hilton Garden Inn will hopefully continue to improve with their occupancy rates, and we'll see revenue obviously exceeding expenditures here. And then just to point out on the expenditure side of things, bond and principal and interest payments for the debt service on the original construction of the hotel is included in that expenditure line. So the hotels have always made sufficient revenue to cover all expenses, debt service, operating, so on and so forth, and you'll see a slight little surplus there for Hilton Garden Inn for next year. Next slide. And then our other hotel, the newer one, Home 2 Suites, much larger surplus, 2.8 million dollars, and again, principal interest on the debt services is included there, the expenses, again, doing very well, that operation, a different clientele, not quite as impacted as Hilton Garden Inn with the pandemic, but still doing very well. Okay, next slide. So at this point, next steps, my staff and I working very closely with the departments as we have been the last four months in this budget process, just refining our revenue projections and our expenditure projections, any kind of last-minute tweaks here and there, and then coming back to City Council a week from today for one final presentation and budget adoption. So at this point, next slide. At this point, again, thank you for your attention, thank you for your support, and at this point, if there are any questions, thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Solozza. Mayor Putim Jimenez, do you have any questions, comments?
I don't have any questions, but again, thank you, Michael, I know we always say this, we thank you and the team for putting these presentations together. One thing I'm really, I was really excited to see actually, the breakdown of the IT services, and the fact that it's not just, this is, this is a big project, and clearly, the reason why we have to do this over the course of an extended period of time because of the deferred maintenance. And unfortunately, from the previous meetings that we've had or the previous presentations, it's been gathered that a lot of the hardware, a lot of the, just everything that we have in the city is completely outdated. So it's really nice, I think that was page 23, I'm not sure if, you know, people are, I know there's been a lot of question about this IT, this IT big number, and it is a big number, but the reason why it's a big number, because it's very necessary, extremely, I mean, it's crucial that we have these, this up and running city with state-of-the-art IT. So thank you again, I look forward to bringing this back on tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Torres?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you Director Solozza for the presentation. It's obviously taken a lot of work and a lot of coordination between all of the different departments and really just trying to get an idea of what the future holds for Monobello, and how to break down our funding to make sure that we can kind of accomplish our vision here, all moving together. I wrote questions as you went through your presentation, if it's okay, if we can go kind of slide by slide here, and, so if we can go back to slide three, please?
If we can pull the presentation, okay, there you go, thank you.
And if you don't have an answer prepared this evening, I completely understand. If, you know, council could get an email later, just some kind of update before next week's meeting, that'd be much appreciated, or even by next week's meeting. So not necessarily having to do with this slide, but I was just curious, in our budget binders, it didn't include the usual executive summary that comes at the beginning, that document usually provides like a lot of context to what we're looking at, the numbers that we're looking at, and so I was just curious if you had an idea when that would be ready for council?
Yes, so you referred to the budget message, and I did realize, once I was, had shipped them out, had not included the budget message, so I'm actually finalizing that today.
Perfect.
Part of posting the agenda report, I'll make sure the budget message is sent directly to the City Council members, but budget message will be posted with the agenda report as well. And you're right, it's about a 30-page document that provides much more context than just this does, so yeah, that will be provided.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. If we can go to slide five, please? So just kind of going by through some of these items, and notice, noting the variances, I was wondering if you might be able to describe a little bit why we see, you know, reduction in grant and special revenue funds, internal service funds?
Yes, absolutely. So in grants and special revenue funds, it's, what's included there, we have two different grant funds, we have a grant fund that's dedicated to just transit grants, and then we have a grant fund that's everything but transit. Special revenue funds also includes like our property tax override and those kinds of special restricted revenue items. So the biggest variance here is related to Transit Fund 270, the Transit Grant Fund. The way that works is, as with most grant funds, it's reimbursable, so we have to spend the money upfront, and then, once we hit certain milestones, we'll make claims to, you know, for example, Federal Transit Administration or the state of California, and they'll reimburse us. So what you see there is that variance is the anticipation that we're spending money ahead of time, but we know for a fact how big that grant is, but the timing is such that I don't like to necessarily say, oh yeah, we're going to get all 3 million in revenue this year. I'd rather put the appropriation on the expense side, knowing that reimbursement will come at the back end. So that's why Fund 270, the Transit Grant Fund, is responsible for the largest variance here in terms of, we have expenses that we know we're going to be incurring next year, but the timing of revenue reimbursements could be next year or the following year.
And really quickly on that point, I just want to note and say thank you to staff for being diligent on that. When I was on the Transit Ad Hoc Committee, I brought to the city's attention that it looked like we hadn't been applying for those funds for a few years, and so, in a lot of the same ways that you guys are starting to like reallocate monies and, as you mentioned, finding ways to essentially like increase our bandwidth without actually changing like the structural budget has been really fantastic, so thank you.
Yes, absolutely. And then to answer your question about the internal service fund, the primary internal service fund there is our insurance fund, and as we work closely with our, not so new anymore, three years now, third-party administrator of lowering our liability costs, lowering our workers' comp costs, you'll see that number get more in line, but basically, the reason it's a little upside down is, we charge certain departments for liability and workers' comp claims, unfortunately, we still need some work on reducing the amount of those claims, so that's why you see that 1.6 million dollar deficit there.
Thank you. On slide six, and talking about the five-year cycle, I was just curious, one of the big themes for this year is research, and so I was just curious as to what your research has uncovered as you start to take a deeper look at the city's budget.
Where do I start? There's been a lot of low-hanging fruit, obviously, in terms of cleaning up how we budget things. Probably the biggest area that's been uncovered, even though we've been doing a better job with cost allocation, is how much better a job we can do at cost allocating things in terms of, we've gotten better at doing direct charges to certain local return funds for James and his staff time, but we need to do a better job of actually maximizing the 20% amount admin that we're allowed for Metro. So it's recognizing that we've improved the cost allocation in this case, but doing that research to realize, oh, we have a 20% mark we can make, and we haven't been making in years. So going that extra step, I guess, and realizing that, yeah, we can do cost allocation, but oh, we can, we have more capacity to charge more things with local return funds. And on the flip side, on the revenue side, is really doing some more research on our revenue patterns. Do we get things monthly, are they one-time revenues, do they get quarterly, what are these quarterly, if they are quarterly, what do the patterns look like? As opposed to just kind of looking at year-end trends and trying to do a back-of-the-envelope calculation, really digging into understanding revenue, especially the general fund, and any cyclicality to it, you know, is it, do we always get the same amount, does it vary from year to year? So really just kind of putting my green eye shades on and getting into the nitty-gritty. Yeah.
Thank you. For slide number nine, I was just curious, being that we're adding the 43 positions and understanding, you know, a great majority of those are coming from transit, is there, do you have the costing associated with those new positions?
Not individually, but that I can follow up with in terms of the cost. Are you just interested in transit or in all positions?
If it could be broken down by department, that'd be appreciated.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
For slide number 10, I was curious, for the position of Battalion Chief and administering all department training, I was just curious, and this might be something to follow up on, what other agencies have kind of like a similar position and a similar function? Just on its face, it kind of seems like a very high position for administration.
Let me, I'll follow up with Chief Palais, I know he and I had talked about, he originally had Fire Captain in that position, I know he and I had some discussions about having that higher level in terms of literally having somebody that people would listen to. I'll get some more details in terms of how that compares with other similar agencies.
Definitely a lot of weight that goes with the big title, right? I was just curious, for slide 13, in regards to fire, you talked about life-saving equipment, turnout's PPE, the dryer for the turnouts and whatnot. I was also curious if you had a couple of the facility improvements that are going to be mentioned, I know that fire has kind of suffered with, you know, dilapidated carpets and peeling pain and all kinds of things, so I was just curious if you could describe that a little bit more?
Yes, I don't, I don't have that detail right now, but I know there are, between Station 55 and Station 57, I know there's some funds in there for facility repairs, I can get that detail.
Thank you. And council, thank you for entertaining my questions. My last one, I was just curious on slide number 16, on the sales tax detail, so the deal with the Monterey Marketplace being that we got, I think, 100% of the sales tax for five years and 18% of the entire property, and then after that five-year period ended, 18% into perpetuity. I was wondering when that five-year period ended, and if the numbers reflected here, like are going beyond that five-year cutoff?
We have, we have one more year, so the 2324 budget, we'll see, so right now, for Costco, we got 50% of everything.
50%.
And then all the remaining is 18%. So after 2324, we'll still get, we'll get 18% from Costco and 18% for everything else. So the 2324 budget will begin to show that reduction in that line item of sales tax.
Okay, very good. Yeah, I remember, I forgot exactly which document I was reading, but it talked about how Monobello was suffering from like about a $400,000 decrease in sales tax, and mostly due to Costco leaving, and so seeing the numbers from the Monterey Market, Monterey Park Marketplace, increasing year-over-year here from 970, or actually, 1,600,006 in the 2020 actual budget, and now seeing, you know, 1.3 is definitely fantastic, and evening out, I think, some of the concerns that we thought about Costco leaving, it continues to treat Monobello well.
Yes.
Even though it's not in our city anymore. Again, Director Solozza and to all the directors that have collaborated and put this together, thank you very much. Madam Mayor, that concludes my questions and comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have some questions too. Back to page five, please. So grants, special revenues, help me understand that, grants that were given to us, that we applied for?
Yes.
Okay, now, next slide. I'm sorry, it was 10, I'm sorry, page 10. I don't see Grant Writer on there. Can you tell me how many departments have a Grant Writer?
So, that title doesn't exist, so we're not a Grant Writer, we have Grants and Project Administrator title, and they usually wear a couple of different hats, and we have a couple of departments with that, but no, I mean, we do fairly well with the resources that we have, and have done very well, so.
So if we can go back to that, page five, these are grants we received. So when MCAP got a grant, there was no Grant Writer, but they took the liberty of writing one to get it for their department.
Correct.
I know our Parks Department, our director, not a Grant Writer, but he applies all the time and we're awarded, same thing with Transit, same thing with Public Works, but no Grant Writer pay?
Correct.
Got it. Page 13, please, I'm going to pick on our Fire Department, they know I love them, life-saving equipment, there is an expiration to turnouts, correct?
Correct.
And we were almost at that deadline, putting all of those firefighters at risk, and currently now they have two sets?
Yes, if, I know for sure there's one, if we haven't completed the purchase of two, I know we're pretty close with getting them the required two sets of turnouts.
Great.
And on top of that, part of that supplemental is a PPE dryer, a dedicated dryer in one of the fire stations to help clean those turnouts and keep them useful and safe.
Especially during COVID, exposing them. Especially during COVID, exposing them, getting them cleaned right away. And their facility, I remember it was a little dingy-looking, dirty, because the lights were so dark. So I know the kitchen was going to get looked at, there was holes in the roof, there was holes in walls, and no privacy in the sleeping quarters. I believe now there's some privacy, so if and when we do get a female firefighter, she'll have her own area, correct? I'm getting a nod from our Chief Palais.
He knows better than I do.
Thank you. Okay, now I'm going to pick on RPD. You know, I love you guys too. We're getting body-warm cameras, so that's going to help us, well, that's where you come in, liabilities. If, God forbid, something happens and our police are involved, where everyone has a cell phone, we can have the whole footage, not just cut and pasted certain parts. Our officers are now protected with these body-warm cameras. Onto page 16, please. 9.4 proposed million, that's not in parentheses, correct?
Correct.
Parentheses mean?
Negative.
Thank you. So we're not going to be in a deficit. I know I'm going to do my share of shopping. Onto page 20. Please. Sorry, I didn't say please.
Page 20.
So this was multi-year for this project. And then one more, page 21, please. Okay, I know I have a computer, I know most of the audience members. When you don't have that license for Microsoft Word or PowerPoint, what happens? I know what happens. They take you away, you don't have an access. What happens if the City of Montebello does not pay this licensing fee?
We can't use it. And we rely on, obviously, we have lots of productivity software.
The same thing that happens to an individual would happen to a whole city.
Yes.
And we would be left with useless.
Yes.
Now, I did go around, and I was in your area, I was in Public Works, taking pictures of all old hardware, older than, I'm sure, all of us sitting up here. Computers with no cameras, no speakers, are those going to be sent to the Smithsonian, or are we, those are going to be replaced?
So part of, part of the hardware dollar amount, not just in the first year but in continuing, is part of computer replacement. So some big purchases of replacing our desktops. And then, actually, I was just talking earlier today with Director Rosso about getting on a schedule, where we're refreshing our desktops or laptops on a regular basis. So, yes, I'm.
Perfect. And I know you mentioned document management, so not boxes in the basement anymore.
Correct, yes.
So actual record-keeping, because I know past administration, past practices, just shove them in a box and we just throw them in the basement. We're getting away from that practice.
Yes. Moving to scanning, yes, I know, I know Alicia's very happy about that.
Great, great. And I want to thank you and your team for your excellent work, working with our state auditor, addressing all those recommendations and beyond. And I'm happy that we do not have parentheses, because that means we are in a deficit. And once again, to all those employees who came out on the weekend to walk with me for Measure H, thank you, because Montebello is your second home, and I appreciate all that you do. So, thank you. With that, Mr. City Attorney, the statement of oral communications.
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor. At this time, the general public may address the City Council on both non-agenda and agenda items. Please be aware that the maximum time allotted for members of the public to speak should not exceed three minutes per speaker. State law prohibits the City Council from taking action or entertaining extended discussion on a topic not listed on the agenda. Please show courtesy to others and direct all of your comments to the mayor. We do have several written comments, Mayor. I'd like to start with those.
Please.
Okay, these were all emailed to the city clerk in advance of the agenda deadline for written comments. First was dated May 23rd and sent at 3:26 PM from Sean Valdez. Hello, I would like to ask during this public comment meeting if the City Council would allow the edification of one or two digital billboard advertisements, monuments next to the Five Freeway, with one being inside the Rosewood Park School lawn area at the very furthest corner. We would like the revenue generated from this signage to benefit the Montebello School District. We are a company seeking to start a new development like this in the city. Thank you, Sean Valdez. Next written comment is from George Martinez, dated May 23rd at 11:25 PM. To the Montebello Planning Commission and the Montebello City Council and all other concerned parties, I, George Martinez, declare that I am a resident of Montebello and that I am concerned for the future of DePaul Evangelical Center located 1105 Bluff Road in Montebello. The property is bordered on the east by Bluff Road, on the north by Frankel Avenue, on the west by Caribway, and on the south by Dale Street, excuse me, Date Street. Number one, I believe the DePaul Evangelicalization Center should be maintained and preserved as is with little or no changes. I'm firmly against the DePaul Evangelicalization Center being rezoned for high-density housing or any housing. I'm against any apartments, condominiums, duplexes, or other multi-unit complexes or single-family homes being constructed on the site. Such projects will result in much more traffic in the area. Parking in this surrounding area is already completely congested. If any new housing is constructed on the site, traffic will be much more congested. Parking will be impossible, and thus will be more unforeseen issues in our already compacted neighborhoods. The side of the DePaul Center is very rare and welcomed open space in our neighborhood or in any neighborhood. Aside from being open spaces, it is a place of much-needed peace and quiet. Next public comment is from Vanessa Nguyen, submitted at May 25th at 8:30 AM. Good morning. What are you doing to prevent tragedies like the Robb Elementary shooting from happening in our schools? Please consider supporting strict gun laws. Please push for easy access to mental health services. As a new mom and preschool teacher, I beg you. Please do not let us live in fear. Sincerely, Vanessa Nguyen. The final email comment was from Yolanda Valdez. Good evening. I am writing this letter to commend the wonderful job of our Parks Director, Mr. David Szazowski, does for our community. I recently moved to Montebello and I see all the programs especially available for children, seniors, and the community. I read that Montebello City View announcing the Independence Day spectacular. Thank you for all the work you do behind the scenes to make us, to make even us big kids happy. On July 2nd, from 2:00 to 9:00 PM, all of the events to be held are great. Thank you for all you do and for your dedication to our city. You are truly, you truly deserve a raise. I believe David is here or was at one time, so David, be sure Yolanda is on your Christmas card list. No, he's not here, okay.
And he's not in the room.
All right. Mayor, at this time, I'll turn to the speaker cards. We have several here this evening.
Please.
First up is Scott Schuster, followed by Will Cervera.
Good evening. I think you deserve a raise too. Last week, I renewed a registration on a van that I bought about a year ago. It's a big, empty kind of van. And before I bought it, I came to City Hall, and I went to the Police Department, and I went to DMV, and I went to AAA to find out what was going to be involved in parking it. I live on Taylor Avenue, and I've been there for about five or six years. Today, I filed a request to have a 30-day waiver for the enforcement of rules that were improperly or incorrectly given to me about the legitimacy and the legality of having a van and parked on the street. I've received a series of citations recently. Things seem to be escalating. And I'm concerned that I've spent thousands of dollars to refurbish an old van based upon incorrect information that I received from a couple of departments in City Hall. So one is something called an administrative notice from the Code Enforcement Department, and the other one is a parking ticket, which is from the Police Department. And I've received a couple pink warning slips, and I've called every time I've gotten one. And I've never heard anything about the legality of the size of the van until this last week, when I received these two citations. It's always been hopscotching the van around for street cleaning days, which is not fun and almost impossible. And my concern really is that I was given such a large amount of incorrect information by people at City Hall. And it's been incorrect this week. Turns out it's not the size of the van, but the weight of the van. So anyway, that's really why I'm here today. I brought a copy of the letter that I dropped off with the Director of the Code Enforcement Division. He's apparently out sick. So I just want to tell you that I'm really disappointed that I've been getting steered wrong. And I'm thousands of dollars in the hall because of it. I guess I can give that to you now.
Mr. Schuster, you certainly sound like you need some clarity. My office will work with probably Joe Polumbi, Community Development, and make sure you at least have clarity on what the city's position is, and then we can go from there.
The clarity is that I can't have the van, and I should have been told that before I bought it.
Well, I have your contact information here, and we'll be in touch and see if we can work something out.
Here's the document that I dropped off today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. It might be a little long. Can I go over a little bit if it goes past the time?
Yeah, you have three minutes, sir.
And Madam Mayor, sorry, Mr. Cervera, Madam Mayor, if the record can also reflect that, Ms. Jimenez has left the room.
So yesterday, I was in court, and while under oath and giving a sworn testimony, Councilwoman Angie Jimenez stated that she was given direction and advice by our City Attorney, City Manager, and our new Police Chief to file a temporary restraining order on me. Mr. Dio, I'm sorry, Jimenez, stated that under oath, unless she perjured herself, and if this fact is true, Montebello residents must demand an investigation into improper use of taxpayer dollars. This was not a city matter, it was a personal matter. And the City Manager, City Attorney, and the Police Chief should not be giving legal advice on our dime. The incident occurred in a public restaurant, not in City Hall nor any city facility. The matter had nothing at all to do with Jimenez's official duty. Jimenez made false statements and accusations in court, where Jimenez said that the mayor and her mother claimed that I own guns and I am a danger to the community. She also said that the chief said I'm a danger to the community and also very violent. That he was witnessing the event that took place with Assemblyman Santiago, that he was a witness. That is false. He was actually, he was actually over 20 feet away from the incident, which I went to go report to him about. Jimenez even tried to use the tragedy in Texas to attempt to sway the judge, but failed, which was very appalling and manipulative. Her theatrical political stunts and consistent bullying are a disgrace to the city and as an official. Even the judge had to ask her if this is about her reelection. Jimenez resorted to an Academy Award-winning performance yesterday in the court and clearly can't handle this job. She should step down or not run. I want to put something on the record, that I have witnessed the photos that were leaked on the Topgolf in, from a closed session, of the future pamphlet of Brad Parent's Topgolf. They were leaked, and it was from the mayor's actual paperwork. Another matter I want to put on the record is that there was a secret recording on the audio that was passed around involving Jimenez's phone calls to the residents during the 2018 election, and it was a private conversation, was in fact recorded by the mayor as well as published and sent to other residents. Jimenez had made false statements, including Torres alleging that his involvement during the parade in the 2020 for the city that he was involved in. David never actually was involved in anything. How do I know this? Because I'm the one that was working with everybody that put this together. I was driving the people around, I was also holding up the signs and putting up the signs. I was only just exercising my First Amendment rights. Furthermore, leaks or disclosures from closed session have occurred not due to council members telling other people, but due to deliberately leaving out documents or having other people in the rooms where they can hear when you guys were on Zoom. This needs to be exposed and held accountable. As far as Mr. Melendez, you should, he promised that he would not be voting on issues that are not before the dais. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Levion, excuse me, it's hard to read, Prothero, and followed by David Munoz.
Even though it's been about two or three years since I've been here, I sure, most of you know what I want to talk about. It's a fentanyl pill factory next door to me at 849 South Fourth Street. That's my neighbor on my south. There's also another pill lab south of him and across the street, two or three there. If they weren't screwing me over on a daily basis, I probably wouldn't be here. But they're going to continue that. They've stole $3,000 or $4,000 worth of stuff from me, screwed up another $25,000 on my race car. So I'll be back, and I've just got to, normally you'd talk to the Chief of Police if that's a new one. But that's a waste of damn time in this city.
Okay, Mr. Munoz, followed by Bill Palacio.
Yeah, how's it going, guys? Okay, you guys put a bunch of homeless people down where I live in the city of Montebello, on the side of Maldon, the railroad tracks. Apparently, my daughter called me up and said, hey, Dad, did you know they put a bunch of homeless people back over there? I said, no, I didn't. So I came the other day and I talked to some of you guys over here about why didn't you guys go send somebody in that neighborhood to go knock on people's doors saying, we're going to put a bunch of homeless people over there? But you did it. My problem is, I don't want them people back there. Because this is not your backyard, this is my backyard. And I don't need them back there. The city of Los Angeles can't control what they have now. They can't feed them people over there. But yet, City of Montebello wants to put in the two cents and get homeless people over here. Now, the problem is, is City of Montebello Fire Department already have their hands tied with problems that they have here to cut some of the people loose. The question is, for the Chief of Police, if he can answer a question, either yes or no question, does he have enough officers so-called to babysit them homeless people at the MetroLink where they have the station? And if he can answer that one now, I would like to know yes or no. A simple question for him. Can he handle it, or does he have enough officers? And is the Fire Department prepared to receive the people that are over there as much drugs or whatever, and you've got social workers and all that? Yippee. I couldn't care less. You got other people in the city of Montebello that needs help too. I said a bunch of homeless people that are going to cost the taxpayers more here in the city of Montebello. If our taxes go up because of this, that's wrong. You get rid of the people that had mobile homes, which was cool, I agree with that one. But now you got made little homes for these people. My neighbors over there in Pickering, they had their shoes stolen from their property. You know, so the issue is now, is that, you know, so my understanding, what you guys are saying is that they're going to be babysitting the people over there, okay? All the people that you have over there, so meaning that none of the people can leave that area to walk down the neighborhood. Well, I think that's a bunch of bullshit, because I don't think that's ever going to happen. Once these people start going berserk, looking for the drugs or walking down the streets and harassing people in the neighborhood, you know what I mean, the outcome ain't going to be pretty. I'd involve my neighbors to come over here with me, because I don't need my neighbors. I'll talk for myself. You got that?
Thank you for your comments, sir. Mr. Palacio? Palacio, my mistake, followed by Mr. Holder.
Hello, Madam Mayor. How are you today? My name is Bill Palesso, and I live at 505 Alice Drive, which is located in the south side of Montebello, South Washington Boulevard. I have a lot of concerns about a letter we received last week regarding the sale and redevelopment of the DePaul Center campus to the Mercy Housing Organization for Low-Income Affordable Housing. The development will have a direct input on my property and my neighborhood, as I live 580 feet from the DePaul Center. There are seven houses between my property and the DePaul Center campus, literally 230 steps away from my front door. steps away from my front door. What I would like to understand is why my neighborhood was not notified when the initial survey was sent to neighbors who live within 1,000 feet of the proposed project. The fact the residents of South Fifth Street, Alice Drive, Caribou Way, Bluff Road, south of Date, were not included in this initial survey, I find very suspicious, especially since we clearly live within 1,000 feet of the campus. Secondly, I'd like to question why my neighborhood was not included, invited, or even made aware of the May 16 meeting held at the DePaul Center, led by a group called the Montebello Future Planning Advisory Committee. As a homeowner who lives only 580 feet from the campus, I would think our input should be included in every step of this proposed project. The fact that we have been blindsided by this make me question the advisory committee's true integrity and intentions. Why haven't the names of the Montebello Future Planning Advisory Committee been made public? Thirdly, why did I have to receive an anonymous letter signed by a concerned community resident to find out about the next upcoming meeting scheduled for Saturday, June 4 at 11:00 a.m? Again, it seems that this advisory committee is doing everything it can to make the neighborhood, make sure that the neighbors and homeowners, who will be impacted the most by this project, are being left in the dark about our future. Another issue I have is with Ms. Jimenez. Seems to be in the news quite frequently lately, and not for the good of Montebello. Ms. Jimenez had a meeting in her driveway with residents to discuss the project of the city of, along with the city manager in attendance. For contact, Ms. Jimenez lives 1.4 miles away from the DePaul Center, on the north side of Washington Boulevard. What criteria was used to determine which residents were invited to this meeting? I request a list of residents, city officials, and who were invited to this meeting and who attended. My question is, why are we going behind the backs of residents, and who are, who are going to be affected the most about this project? Let me say publicly right here and now, I will be watching very closely to see if any further meetings are held by you or any other city council member regarding this project, whom the community is, should be participating in. As an elected member of the city, you are here to represent the citizens of Montebello, not your own personal interest. The homeowners south of Washington Boulevard will be watching very closely how the members of this council move forward in regards to this project. There is an election coming up in November, and I guarantee, we will not forget how you've tried to minimize our participation in this critical decision. As it stands right now, Montebello has made no efforts in 27 years that I've lived here to put any money or resources into supporting the current residents of South Montebello by providing a local grocery store, pharmacy, sit-down restaurant, not fast food joints or drive-thru, banking center, medical facilities, et cetera. All commercial services are located north of Woodyer Boulevard. Unfortunately, most residents of South Montebello spend their tax dollars in Pico Rivera, as they're the, offer the retail services and opportunities that the community that Montebello has neglected for decades. Before we start looking to make a development of low-income neighborhood, let's start supporting the community we already have. Thank you.
Thank you. Director, oh, Mr. Palesso?
Yes, I want to.
Mayor Potem had a comment.
I want to say your name correctly, and I read it here as-
Palesso, the O silent.
Palesso.
Palesso.
Okay, Mr. Palesso. I'm very glad you brought this up, because again, I am the only member of the council that lives in the south side of Montebello.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
And why, and why I do-
He asked for-
-live over a mile away from the DePaul Center.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
The reason why this was brought to my attention is because several of the residents-
Are you allowed to trust comments?
Including-
The city attorney let me-
Yeah, if I may, Mayor, you're the chair of the meeting. This was a, you know, it's a public comment session. There was asked for a response from a council member, so it's up to the chair whether or not that opportunity is afforded.
Yes, you hadn't asked about Mayor Potem, so she's addressing your comment.
So I just, I should note the discrimination when last time I tried to apologize, and Mayor Potem addressing the residents this time.
I told you that you can do it during your council orals, and you chose not to do it during council orals.
This is not her orals.
Next time you can just do it in council orals, but he is asking her if she's going to do it, and you would, you should talk to the speaker if she wanted us to hear from you.
Mr. Palesso.
In the state, in the audience.
So there are several members of the community that live, that live very close to the DePaul Center.
You can have one of them.
Okay, no, so you're one of them. There's another woman by the name of Brisa Sotelo, who's also very active in the community. There's also Felipe. So these members of the community reached out to my colleague Salvador Melendez. The first time I heard about this project was actually through them, and the first time I heard about Mercy was because of these folks that live south of Washington. Sal asked me if I could host some of these members in the south side, and I told him, no. I was actually late to this meeting in my front yard, because we wanted to address the concerns of the community. There was a lot of miscommunication, there was a lot of misinformation. So these concerned residents, who are very against what they've heard regarding the Mercy, this Mercy Housing project, they wanted to come and talk to the member in the south side. So I said, I want to welcome everyone to my front yard. And it was maybe seven of them. Brisa, Felipe, this other gentleman that came, I can't remember all their, I don't remember all their names, but there might have been seven of them. So I asked Mr. Palumbi, actually Sal, my colleague, my colleague member, Sal, asked Mr. Palumbi and our city manager to, if they could please attend this meeting, to clarify and to answer any concerns that these concerned residents, and again, it wasn't a meeting where we sent out, it was from one day to the next, because there had been a lot of rumors. We were actually in a conference when we received a message from one of these, one of these residents, and I believe myself and the rest of my colleagues received this message. So for our last council meeting that was supposed to happen a week ago, my colleague Melendez, Mr. Melendez-
And that is public orals.
Yes, he did, and he actually got that, it was either he or I that were going to bring this up, because we did find out about this meeting that happened maybe two weeks ago, and apparently there was some sort of committee formed, and some of the members in the community, of the community that were in that council, in that meeting, are people that do not live in the south side, people that live up in this area, who would not be affected by, clearly by any of this. So again, Mr. Melendez had this on his, in his orals today, because we wanted to make sure that while people are doing outreach, or this Mercy, these Mercy Project folks are doing their outreach, they're contacting the people that live in the area. If they're going to form a committee, they need to listen to the residents that live in the area, like you, Mr. Palesso, so I'm very sorry.
They haven't started on too good of a foot.
Okay, and I, and I agree with you completely, because I had these folks, these community members, reaching out to me after that meeting and saying, hey, so they really thought that we knew more than we were willing to share. That's how they, that's how they, that's how they put it, until we brought our city manager and Mr. Palumbi, who let us know again, yes, the DePaul Center, well, my mother, who's a very religious woman, she is a catechism teacher, and she has taken her kids there to, for years, for retreats, and she's been part of retreats. She was actually the first one to ever bring up the DePaul Center and, and the future of it. So now that we're here, again, I was in my colleague's council orals, and his message was really going to be to the Mercy Housing folks, to please make sure, as they move forward with doing any type of outreach, to include the members of the community that live right there, around the corner, down the street, you. So I had just asked Christopher Jimenez, who's our city clerk, to give me my contact information, because again, you were not excluded from this meeting, because we didn't, you know, we were trying, we weren't trying to exclude any members of the community. It was just that this group of members, who are very active and very outspoken, reached out, and because Sal does not live in that area, he suggested that we, that we meet with these folks with a member of the council that lives in that side, in the side of town.
Mayor Potem, I do believe we have Mr. Palumbi here as well, who can give a little bit of context, maybe very briefly. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Palesso.
Thank you. And how involved is the city with this outreach?
So, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, the city is not involved at all in any of these community outreach efforts. However, it's not uncommon for developers to do these type of outreach, you know, in, you know, in advance of maybe submitting a formal application. We have not received a formal application. We haven't seen any plans for a proposed project, so we're, we're just as, you know, curious as anyone else in the community as to what the proposal is.
Sort of clarifying, Mr. Palumbi, this is private property, private developer, and the city's involvement would be through a land use application process that you haven't seen yet.
Correct, which would, would require a public hearing process, notification, once that happens.
Right, so my understanding is that to the extent there's outreach and engagement, they're preliminary, and there will be formal opportunities for public input and comment if and when this moves forward.
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right.
Madam Mayor, point of information.
Go ahead.
So two questions. In the past, both you and the Mayor Potem have characterized responses to, to public orals as violating people's First Amendment rights, which, I mean, for a basic, as a basic idea is just wrong. The First Amendment does not mean that people cannot respond, but being that both you and the Mayor Potem have that belief that responding to, to a, an oral by our residents is an attack, I'd like to understand how you qualify that. And second, as you just said, right now, I was invited to speak during my orals in response, and I'm wondering why Ms. Jimenez wasn't encouraged to do the same thing. I'm just trying to understand the rules here, because they seem to be inconsistently applied, and they seem to be discriminatory to the point where certain members are allowed certain privileges while others aren't.
If I may, Mayor, and I don't mean to dismiss the issue, and maybe the appropriate subject for a future council discussion about, you know, manner of hosting the meetings and whatnot, I candidly haven't been here in all those meetings, so if there's any inconsistency, I'll wear that. But I did advise Mayor Potem that under those circumstances, she could respond, but if there needs to be clarity at the dais, I'd recommend we not engage in that discussion now, but maybe agendize that for a future oral.
Okay. Maybe we put it in the handbook, for our council handbook? Is, I think we could, is that okay? We can address it then? Oh, okay.
Mr. Holder, thank you for your patience, followed by Mr. Arturo Navarro.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. The timing is actually pretty good here. My name is Ed Holder with Mercy Housing. I'm Vice President of Real Estate for, for California, though I'm based down here in Southern California. I come here representing both Mercy Housing and the congregation of the Mission at Western Province, AKA the Vincentians, this evening, with an invitation, and it, and it does, it does hurt to hear the previous comment from, from Mr. Palesso. And, but what I can say is we're at the very beginning of this journey, and we completely understand that there has been confusion around who has been sent what, and a colleague of mine is going to speak momentarily after me about the next steps, including this Saturday and some other activities that we've undertaken to this, to this point, and what we plan to do, but we do invite the community to join us this Saturday at 11:00 a.m. at the, at the DePaul Center. And there is information, which my colleague Arturo will share, as to where the public can always find the most current information about the project. We do have a website set up, as well as a Facebook page. I do want to say that we, we come into this community with an awareness of, also of the enormous burdens placed on seniors, families, and veterans, current residents living right now in Montebello, struggling to absorb increasingly unaffordable rents, making difficult decisions about how best to spend a fixed income payment, or living in converted spaces not suited for housing, putting education, health, and futures at risk. We start this journey also with an awareness of the desire to see increased investment in South Montebello, to increase access to opportunities for community equity and wealth creation, to increase the range of housing opportunities available to residents across all income categories, including first-time home buyers and other buyers who love Montebello but for whom a seven-figure home is, is far out of reach. We know there will be concerns and questions and doubts, like we have heard tonight. We understand the legacy of this community, of this, of the DePaul Center within the community, and that any change there is, is difficult, requires very hard and honest conversations. We're prepared for that, and we believe it begins really this, this Saturday. Again, we invite the community to join us there and begin what we, we know will be a very participatory process. We hope you will join us there, see the, the way that we have set that up and the way we want to engage and invite feedback around this. With that, I do want to, in my time, and invite Arturo Navarro, hopefully he's next. We tried to coordinate this, so, okay, thank you.
He is indeed, and then either yourself or Mr. Navarro, if there's a point of contact, I, I know that the mayor was asking, that'd be helpful.
I'm happy to give a card right now.
Great, thank you so much.
Yep. Thank you.
And Mr. Navarro, floor is yours.
1741 Neils Armstrong Street. Again, my, good evening, my name is Arturo Navarro, program manager with a nonprofit organization called Los Angeles Neighborhood Initiative, also known as ALONI. Our organization was established in 1994, after the civil unrest of the early 90s, and the goal of the organization is to be a liaison between city government and community members. The goal is to visualize neighborhoods by engaging people, building public places, and understanding that community members know their neighborhood the best. One of the strategies that ALONI works, our model is going to where the residents are. And one of the most recent activities I've been doing in the last, since the beginning of the month or so, is going to the DePaul church, the Paul church, every day. We have committed residents that meet there every morning, Monday to Friday, 8:00 a.m. sharp, and they love that church. And I've been meeting with them every day, discussing with them the project, the, the planning effort, and they're actually helping me out by distributing surveys in Spanish and English. At this point, we have, we have, we closed the survey last, we are closing this tonight at midnight, and as of now, we have 103 responses focused on the mailing that was done early April. So we, we have focused our efforts in four different categories. First, creating awareness of the planning effort. So we mailed out fact sheets and introduction letter in multiple languages, in English, Spanish, Armenian, and simplified Chinese. We mailed over 877 envelopes with two residents. If some did not get it, you know, we apologize for that, but the mailing was done. We also created an online presence, by creating a Facebook page, created on April 12. The, the Facebook page is called the Paul Campus Future Planning, and it has received over 80 post engagements and reached 1,500 people in Montebello. It has been shared by groups such as, you know, you're from Montebello If. Also, we have a website, mercyhousingmontebello.org, where everyone can provide comments and receive information about the effort. So the survey that we created was also translated in four languages, and we asked questions such as, what qualities are important in the future planning of the DePaul campus? What types of green open space would you like to see? What types of housing would you like to see? What type of housing do you not want to see? And these four questions were established by the, by residents who we reached out to initially in this process. The city planning department provided us a list of stakeholders representing the community at large. So we reached out to a lot of these members, school, school representatives, they weren't available, they just wasn't in their purview. We did get responses from the director of the YMCA, Paul, also from the hearts of compassion, John Pastor Velasco, who unfortunately passed away recently, but we've been working with him, a couple of residents from the area, and we're using them as a tool to create the outreach. Who else is not part of the process? Who else can we bring in? If they don't want to be part of the process, then we cannot help them. So, yeah, we also have a, a meeting, like as was mentioned by Mr. Holder, we have a meeting this Saturday, this Saturday from 11:00 to 2:00. It's an open house, so it's going to be open house at the very first office at the Paul Center. Come in, learn about the history, learn about the goals, where the city comes in in this process, and how we're just there to collect feedback from residents. And we'll have translators there as well. So, thank you for your time. I left flyers about the community meeting Saturday outside, as well as the info and fact sheet that was sent out in the mail there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Linda Nicholas, followed by Teela Gagorian.
Teela Gagorian, resident of Montebello for over 50 years. I am a resident of North Montebello. However, South Montebello is a part of my city. I've never seen anyone build a wall dividing the south from the north. So what affects and takes place in South Montebello affects the whole city. I don't know where you get, who came up with this idea of housing 3,000 homeless people in South Montebello? Who, who came up with this idea? Who's paying whom is what I would like to know. We do not need this in our city. There's a lot of cities in Los Angeles County. Why doesn't everybody take a certain amount of homeless people? Why are they all pushing them to Montebello? What are we, chub liver? We are not. We are a wonderful, beautiful city and husband for many, many years. This city was known as the city of flowers. A lot of people have forgotten about flowers, but I've not. I've lived in this community a very long time, and I'm very upset that no one knew that this was going on until recently. You, if you've had meetings, you have not told the public about the meetings. You might have told a few people. But when something like this takes place in our community, the whole community, the whole city, north and south, east and west, needs to be notified, and they take, need to take part in this decision-making and give their opinion. Give them a voice. Do not take their First Amendment rights away from them. This is a very bad thing for our city to be doing at this point. I don't know who's paying whom, but I'm sure someone is. And in the end, the truth shall prevail. We need to keep our city safe, and we need to be thoughtful of who we bring into our community to live. Where it's not just, what are open borders? You're going to bring all the people coming in from, from the borders because we have open borders? This is not the right way to, to work with our city. I am very upset with what I see happening, and I'm more upset that we did not know this was going on until recently. That's absurd. We are residents of this community. And like I says, I've been in this community for 50 years, and I like where I live. And I do not want to have to move because I do not agree because the City Council thinks it's okay and developers, it's okay to bring in homeless people and house them. They have to become a part of our community. And I do not mind taking our share, but like I said, there's a lot of other cities in the LA County. So let's divide all of this responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nicholas? And last speaker after Ms. Nicholas will be Ressa Tamayo.
Good evening, my name is Linda Nicholas, address on file. I would ask this council to think about passing, I don't know if it's an ordinance, a law, regarding payments to council members that are missing their meetings. Commissioners don't get paid if they don't show up. I don't think council members that miss should be paid either. As far back as I can remember, a former mayor, Molinari, served on this body for over 35 years. And all that time, he missed two meetings in 35 years. Once he was hospitalized, and once he was snowed in and couldn't fly back. In 35 years, two meetings. Here we have both Peralta, again, absent. Last time she was in, in Sanada. Torres missed because he went to stagecoach in Indio and couldn't be bothered to drive back when he chose the date. You, Madam Mayor, cut your husband's surprise trip to Hawaii Shore to be in your seat on time. That's the difference, it's called responsible. Last year in February, I spoke to Will Severa about an action Mr. Torres did when he walked into the department and announced to the staff, they better look out because when he becomes the mayor, the staff better jump at his demands or he'd get them fired. That was one of the first signs a little power went straight to his head. Ask Mrs. Severa, I told him. I'd like to publicly apologize to the 17 employees ridiculed for speaking up against Torres attacks. Like the Whittier Daily Newspaper said, toxic work environment. After the memorial last Wednesday, I asked you, Madam Mayor, if I could see your office, to show me your office because I had never seen it. Unbeknownst to me, the fire department was in an office responding to a 911 call. Hopefully, our city manager, Bobadilla, is watching this. I want to apologize if this violates his HEPA rights, but this needs to be said on the record. As the fire responders were leaving, you, Mr. Torres, was so giddy and so happy about causing the 911 call, you didn't realize that I could hear you coming when you blurted out. You said, quote, "Too bad they saved him," referring to the city manager. You are a heartless evil person. Please, Mr. City Manager Bobadilla, file a complaint against Torres. He has made our city a toxic place to work, all under the guise of calling it transparency. When if not, when not if, a class action lawsuit is filed, please hold a press conference on the steps of City Hall so all those ignorant people that believed his lies will realize the millions of dollars Torres and Peralta are going to cost us, the taxpayers. And their charges were real. Madam Mayor, I called the ACLU and asked if by allowing Mr. Torres to rebut our public comments would be considered infringing on his First Amendment rights. I was told, no. If Torres wants to give his opinion, he should fill out a speaker card and come down to the podium and speak like everybody else. Thank you.
Ms. Tamayo.
Buenas noches. Honorable Kimberly Cobos, Mayor de la Ciudad de Montebello y miembros del Consilio. Quiero decirles que yo vivo en el 500 Sur Montebello Boulevard y yo soy una...
Un momento, por favor. Señora, perdón. Si se puede hablar despacio o tratar de traducir?
Bueno, okay. Pero déme en el tiempo también.
Sí.
Okay, no me lo quiten.
Sí.
Yo soy una activista comunitaria también.
She, she's a community activist?
Y estoy escuchando a mis amigas y amigos que tengo yo en el sur de Montebello en el proyecto de Mercy. Y estamos comentando sobre...
So, so she's been listening to some of her friends and neighbors in the south side of Montebello regarding the Mercy Housing project?
Y tengo a un bloque de donde está este futuro proyecto. Amistades que son sordomudos.
So she has friends that are, that live within, within one block of the project, proposed project?
Y ellos están temerosos de que personas jóvenes con múltiples problemas sociales...
And those people are terrified that the people, the people that, homeless people that might live at this proposed project would, would come with various social problems?
Y nos estamos reuniendo para mirar que esto no suceda.
And they're uniting to ensure that this project does not come occur?
Porque también hay mucho lugar y se puede hacer como en lo que hace. Este problema es de hombres, es responsabilidad. Yo pienso de el estado y el, y el condado.
She believes this homeless problem is an issue that should be handled by the state and, and county governments?
Y tienen que buscar unas apropiadas terrenos.
And, and they should find more appropriate properties for these types of projects?
Como San Antonio, San Antonio, Texas tiene terrenos que ellos han desarrollado.
For example, the city of San Antonio, she, she says, has found vacant lots for, that are more appropriate for these types of projects?
Okay, el otro, el otro... situación que yo estoy viendo que no tenemos, me preocupa porque siempre yo estoy abogando por los niños, los infantes. Y es responsabilidad ustedes como miembros del Consilio que tienen la responsabilidad de gobierno, mirar que nuestros niños, infantes, tengan su fórmula de leche infante.
So she's advocating for...
En las tiendas o en el WIC, no hay.
She, she's advocating for children and infants related to the current shortage of infant formula, and she believes the City Council should advocate and, and help ensure that, ensure that there's enough supply?
Serciorense ustedes que son una organización que vende servicios para la ciudad. Que esta comida tengan nuestros infantes.
To make sure, that the city should make sure that there's enough formula for infants?
El también lo que yo quiero decirles que estoy muy... como muy gustosa. Yo vivo aquí desde 1991 y jamás había mirado una celebración para nuestros soldados caídos este mayo 30. Y el señor David Sosnowy.
Sosnowski.
Okay. Yo pregunté quién hizo todo esto y me dijeron, David lo hizo. Quiero darles las gracias por tener este empleado que hace todo lo posible por, con su grupo para hacerlo, para tener para nosotros la dignidad y el respeto que se merece esta comunidad. Y también...
She's complimenting the city on the recent Memorial Day ceremony, and in particular, Director Sosnowski, who, who put together the, the event and, or managed the event?
También quiero, quiero decir que el viernes por la tarde, yo estaba caminando en mi bloque y miré a un joven oficial de la policía. Y no me gusta dar nombres porque tengo mucho respeto por un oficial de, de la policía. Pero él estaba preguntándolo, preguntando a un joven que si tenía hambre, que si había comido, que si dónde vivía. Entonces, yo me quedé un poquito parada. Él estaba de espaldas, no le pude mirar su nombre, pero me di cuenta más o menos que era un muchacho que estaba fuera de su casa. Y qué bueno que los policías aquí están tomando atención en nuestros jóvenes porque ahorita es el tiempo en, en lo, en el que ellos, los jóvenes en Foster, los están tirando para afuera. Y pues, me da mucho, okay.
So she recounted an interaction that she witnessed of one of our police officers with a young man that she believes may have been either homeless or just out of his house, and he was asking if, if he had eaten or was hungry and, and had a place to stay?
Y pues, son muchas las cosas que quiero decirles, pero ahorita, por el momento, voy a dejarlo así porque si no, aquí me voy a estar parada. Y pues, muchas gracias por tener nuestra comunidad lo mejor posible. Y estoy mirando las prioridades que están haciendo porque yo soy una mujer que yo estoy mirando y caminando por todas partes para mirar el progreso de nuestra ciudad. Y también veo muchas cosas que necesitamos arreglar, pero poco a poco. Muchas gracias y buenas noches.
Muchas gracias, señora. So, so she just summarized that she's very active in the community. She walks a lot, and she's noticed a lot of progress and is keeping an eye out for other things that the city would need to pay attention to. Okay, Mayor, that concludes the public comment portion of the agenda. Item 10, oh, we'll go to the staff communications, I'm sorry.
Director Enriquez, is there any items of community interest?
I'd like to invite Director Sosnowski to talk about some of the upcoming events.
The man of the hour.
Sosnowski in Spanish, that was cool. Thank you, Director Enriquez, Mayor Protem, members of the council. Just a quick update, we're getting to the end of the current farmer's market season that's taking place Thursday nights from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. So we have five dates left, including tomorrow. So it's the last five dates, June 2nd, 9th, 16th, 23rd, and 30th. Kind of a big name tomorrow, Susie Hansen, Matt and Jazz Band will be out at the farmer's market, which is at the southeast corner of Montebello and Luger, behind the Wells Fargo Bank. So join us for the remaining five. We'd like to invite all members of the community for that. And just another brief announcement, this weekend is yard sale date. This is the week, the weekend where yard sales are allowed, June 3rd, 4th, and 5th. And the member to call for more information is actually Director Palumbi's office, 323-887-1490. So once again, farmer's market, we're at the final five Thursdays starting tomorrow, and then this weekend's yard sale weekend. So clean out the garage.
Thank you, Director Sosnowski. And the first item of business?
Yeah, so item 10, we removed from the agenda. So we're on to the consent calendar, Mayor. May I read that? No, we already did that at the beginning of the meeting. We, we did a single motion to remove all of those items to the next meeting. So on to the consent. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine. Any items a council member wishes to discuss should be designated at this time. All other items may be moved in a single motion. Such approval will also waive the reading of any ordinance. At this time, I will poll the council. Mayor Protem Jimenez? Councilmember Torres?
13 and 16.
13 and 16. And Mayor Cobos Cawthorn?
And 13 as well.
13. Okay, so for consideration by the council are 11, 12, 14, and 15.
Could I have a motion? Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. City Clerk?
Mayor Protem Jimenez?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Cobos Cawthorn?
And I vote aye, that carries 3-0.
Okay, thank you. And item 13 was pulled by the mayor and councilmember Torres. Authorized a notice inviting bids for the High Trap Streets Fiscal Year 2022, 2023 project, CP number 8 dot 897.
Is there a staff report, Director Enriquez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I can talk a little bit about the, the project. But is there a specific question that was, you'd like me to focus on?
Councilmember Torres, do you want to set your questions or comments first, and then Director Enriquez can address them?
No, that's okay. I mean, the, the only question that I had, I was wondering if there's a comprehensive list of streets and their grades that's available for the public? Because I understand, like, when, like, we've, I don't know if we've gone through the entire city, but as we look at projects to complete, you know, streets are graded, like, based on various conditions. And I was wondering if there's any kind of list of that?
Oh, oh, sure. So at one of, I think our last budget study, study sessions, we talked a little bit about public works and in particular, future planning for HEPA improvement projects. And we, I demonstrated the first version of our GIS mapping that we are using to start planning the future of, of projects, in particular, street paving projects. We are currently in the process of, of populating that geographic database with information about the streets. to, to help in the decision-making of, of a program for the next five, 10 years with the monies available. And that will consist of raiding the street, as you mentioned, uh, in terms of visual condition, as well as, uh, the type of construction, original construction of the streets, so we can come up with recommendations for, uh, what needs to be done to, to streets and put a, a number to it. So in the end of that process, we'll have the entire, the city mapped and recommendations for what needs to be done to each street, and then we can start to decide how, how much we can do each year with the monies available. Unfortunately, that, that is quite an undertaking, so my, uh, I anticipate that that'll take probably about six months to populate and come up with initial recommendations, and, uh, the plan would be to take that, uh, first through the, um, Infrastructure Committee or Street Ad Hoc, and then eventually to the, this full city council for consideration.
And I guess, uh, just as a, as a follow-up question, um, so being that we don't have all of our streets graded, uh, just curious how these particular streets were chosen?
Uh, sure, uh, so in, in light of the fact that, that that's going to take about six months to have the full program or information to come up with a full program, I, I didn't want to delay working on streets because we do have some funding available and, and there is a, um, spending, um, deadline associated with these funds. So these particular streets are chosen because of the type of, uh, original construction, so they're appropriate for this type of, of rehab, uh, process. Um, and I, my recommendation is to go ahead and do these streets as sort of the first, uh, year of that program, and then by the time we get through this, uh, project, we will have more information about, uh, programming, other streets throughout the city.
And I apologize, as you bring up these points, new questions come to mind. Uh, that, when is that funding deadline?
It, it's a rolling deadline, I, and it changes for, for different types of, of funding sources we get, uh, through Metro. But there is a, a three-year rolling deadline, so if, if we don't keep spending money, we're in danger of losing money to lapse.
Thank you very much.
For, I know I, I polled it as well, the high rap, um, process is a lot more cost-effective for the city. The infrastructure, our street ad hoc was mentioned, Mayor Potem Jimenez and I sit on that, and we drove together and looked at the streets that were proposed, and every street has a grade. And I think our highest grade is like a C. So we're doing a lot of the streets that are, pretty much haven't been touched in decades. And which streets don't have the high traffic or the heavy vehicles, the most deliveries, so it's not going to be where the bimbo factory is, it's not going to be where, the, on the train tracks where the semis are going. But Mayor Potem Jimenez and I both agree that these streets in the south were needed because the first, the, uh, phases were a lot, in the majority of the north, so we thought only fair, let's do the south. And I'm not sure if Mayor Potem Jimenez wants to add anything to that as well.
If, if I may, mayor, these particular streets are, were constructed with a, a method that was used in the 50s, 50s and 60s of, of a, the streets are called, were built with a, a process called macadam. And because they were built that way, they have a very thin layer of asphalt, um, that can't be grinded down, because you, you would destroy the street. Therefore, if we don't do this process, there would be a complete reconstruction, um, at almost three times the cost. Um, so our, our paving the way program, we piloted this high rap, uh, system, and, um, we learned a lot through that process, but, uh, we have seen a, a great deal of success in dealing with these types of streets, um, so that they're, they receive a, a brand-new surface without the, the cost of a reconstruction.
Thank you.
And it just so happens that there's a lot of these macadam streets in the, in the south part of Montebello.
Thank you, Director Enriquez. I'm pretty excited about this, so I think I'm going to make the motion, can I have a second?
Second, do.
Madam Mayor, one more comment, real quick.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I just, uh, do want to acknowledge really quickly that South Montebello has streets that are badly in need of repair. And, um, while some of the streets that are included on this list are more than due for repaving and resurfacing, um, I was able to view them myself as well. Several in this proposed capital project are nowhere near as bad as many others in our city that are much more full of potholes, cracks, um, more prone to, um, or more susceptible to water damage that can cause like greater, greater structural, uh, issues. And so I just, uh, want to, uh, state that down for the record that, um, this particular set, while, again, just a few of them definitely need repair, other ones, I, I definitely see other needs in the city.
Okay, so there's a first, a second, Mr. City Clerk?
Mayor Potem Jimenez.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres.
Nay.
Mayor Cobos Cawthorn.
And I vote aye, two to one.
Yeah, that item does pass with the majority of the quorum.
Thank you, and look forward to having your streets paved in the south. Next item?
Item 16, Payment of Bills Resolution Number 22-35 Approving the City Warrant Register of Demands Dated May 25th, 2022. This was polled by Councilmember Torres.
Uh, so just, uh, a couple of questions on some of the entries here. First of all, just wanted to follow up on my request, I believe that I first made in 2021. Um, there was a particular item that looked like it was in regards to, um, an executive physical. The city attorney and the city manager said that they would confer to see if there were any, um, HIPAA issues in terms of sharing any other related expenses, in terms of, um, perhaps mileage, uh, if there was overnight lodgings and, and, um, related expenses. Just curious, as one of the entries, um, one, Director Sosnowski is listed in the warrant register as contract services, so I was just wondering if, if that could be, um, detailed a little bit more?
If, if, if we're going to look at that, I, I think we need to look at the actual register to see what the line item is.
Yeah, it can be- Yeah, and unfortunately I didn't have the number down, and we don't have the warrant register here, but I believe it's on the last page or the second-to-last page of the warrant register.
Sorry, slow, slow internet.
I think our Assistant Divided Clerk is, uh-
I believe it's on the last page of the warrant register.
I apologize, our internet is out on the dais, so we're looking for a hard copy here.
Fancy IT.
Oh, it is the last one.
Director Sosnowski, if you can answer.
Yeah, so I did submit a reimbursement, uh, Councilmember Torres, for, uh, the street fest from last year. So during the budget cleanup process and closing off this year, um, Michael's staff, uh, showed me an open PO, and I was like, oh yeah, that's right, I never, uh, got reimbursed for the band, Sonora de Amita, so I made a deposit, uh, on my own card. Uh, back before we had the new city purchasing cards, and my wife reminded me 350 times, but I finally got reimbursed recently, so, but yeah, it was 2,500. So it was S and Y Supply, which was the vendor, I did a deposit on my personal card, and then the city paid the rest.
That is extremely kind and generous of you. My main question was just, it was, I was curious just why it was listed as contract services, but, um, just again, another one of the many services that you provide our city that we don't even know happened, so thank you very much, Director.
Prefer not to do it that way, and I think Michael prefers I don't do it that way too.
Do you get interest on that, David?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, and then, uh, just a second item, there's, uh, an item for 1.85 million for, uh, daily algian, and if, uh, that claim could be described, and at the conclusion of that, I would motion to approve the item.
Do you know what page that's on?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, I don't recall. 1.85?
Director Solorza, I'm not sure if you have this information at hand, but it, uh, it's in 1.85 million and the account description is incurred claims?
Yeah, it's a, uh, recently settled settlement agreement. I'm not quite sure, looking at our city attorney.
Settlement agreement.
Yep.
Settlement payment.
Yep.
Thank you very much, and, uh, with that, I motion to approve the item.
Okay, can I have a second? Mr. City Clerk?
Mayor Potem Jimenez.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres.
Aye.
Mayor Cobos Cawthorn.
And I vote aye, that item carries.
Thank you, that concludes, uh, the business portion of the agenda, takes us to AB 1234 Reports.
Mayor Potem Jimenez?
Go ahead.
You could talk about that, we all went to that conference.
Councilmember Torres?
Nothing to report.
Director, Michael Chief, you can please put up these slides. There was only three. Yeah, they're, they're PDFs. Well, until they show the slide, uh, this conference spanned across the entire Las Vegas Convention Center. There was plenty of parking, especially for the thousands of people that were there. The shuttles ran every minute, hour, they just were non-stop. So there's the south meeting hall, the north meeting hall, the central. And we would have to run from the north all the way to the south if we had a meeting or a session we wanted to see from the south to central, and it was multi-levels. Um, I'd like to thank staff who manned our booth. We, we shared a booth with the San Gabriel Valley COG, and it was Stacy and Monica, so if you can, please tell them thank you from us, as well as ACM Arlene Salazar. Those were the ones that were there manning the booth, so thank you so much, great show for Montebello. Thank you to my colleagues who attended as well. If you can show the next PDF? So I highlighted in blue, so this is the central hall, I highlighted in blue the ones that we huffed it around. So mind you, we would have to walk this entire hall, and then if we wanted to go to one of the sessions, we'd have to, if we were all the way in the far back, we'd have to walk the entire hall and go across to the south or the north if we wanted to go to the session. And-
Mayor, these are not to scale, correct? I mean, these conference halls are a football field each?
More than, more than football fields. Uh, and one day I walked over 17,000 steps, along with our treasurer, Ralph Gutierrez. He was a sport and was right there with us, so thank you to him as well. So in between walking this whole entire hall, um, I purchased, this last time it was a business card, but on the back has a QR code, and I would go and pitch Montebello, hey, can I have 30 seconds of your time, let me give you my contact information because you can see how many there are, giving a business card that they're just going to toss isn't pretty efficient. So if they scanned it with their phone, my information would go straight there, and then they can share theirs right back, and it was the best $40 I spent, and I didn't get reimbursed. For, on my business card, I did it, I welcome my other colleagues to do it as well, but I thank them for joining us pitching Montebello. And the sessions that were pretty interesting were the future of parking, because guess what? That's what, one of the main problems that we hear, how do we, how do we ensure that there's sufficient parking? How do we account for curbside pickups, because that's now the new norm? And EV charging stations, because we all know that electric cars are coming, and that's the future of the whole state, so that was another really interesting session. The last mile, we're having that Amazon Distribution Center, so this was another one, that's the last mile fulfillment center, how it comes into play, and how the consumer gets their product in a timely manner, so it was another interesting one. And marketplace innovation was how current malls are, their spaces, and how do we make them attractive and for people to shop, gather, spend hours. So again, um, thank you, I'll leave this up for my, my Mayor Potem, uh, colleague, Jimenez, if she wants to add anything, if I missed it.
You, um, no, we were here. Just so people can understand, this is a conference in Vegas, and it's a two-to-three day conference. Um, ICSC, which is Innovating Commerce, Serving Communities, and our treasurer did accompany us. We met with different folks, so what these, what the purpose of this organization is, is they, they promote and help elevate marketplaces and spaces where people shop, dine, work, play, and gather as foundational and vital ingredients of the communities and our economy. So we were, um, we had been and met with these folks last year, um, who are extremely instrumental in setting up, helping us set, um, different meetings with folks that are wanting to come to, um, to bring their business to the city of Montebello. Um, it was a rather productive, um, conference, and, um, yes, we walked a lot, and, but we got a lot out of it.
Thank you, Treasurer Gutierrez?
Yeah, you know, I want to thank the city for inviting me, and I just want to mention, uh, to Director Palombi and his staff, it was, uh, nice to have them there, I mean, they, because it's our department, um, you know, with Monica and Stacy there, uh, you got some all-stars there, and they were able to, when a property came up, like, just quickly, the response of, you know, there's paperwork being put in, these are the goals there, and, uh, you know, our partnership with Navi Retail, I think for, for us to continue working with them, and I think the residents just have to understand that, uh, we can't just bring a business in a, in a blink of an eye, it's, it's a long process. And I think with, uh, Mr. Palombi and his team, uh, and working with the property management companies and also the property owners, I think we sort of, um, get that relationship that now a vendor sees that it's a little bit more attractive, and we can get the, uh, the nice sit-down restaurants that we want, or, you know, the markets that we need, and, uh, so it's eye-opening, but I know, uh, people want things fast, but I know it's a long process, and it was nice to, um, be at a massive, massive conference, and, uh, you know, one thing I did see is it was a lot of males there. But, you know, Montebello rolled in with, you know, Mayor Potem, female, the Mayor Cobos, two staff members from, uh, planning, and also an assistant city manager, so it was, it was nice to see. And I think we represent well, uh, the women that we have here in our departments and in our dais, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, and you held your own with all females, so appreciate it. I think that's where the coaching skills come in. So with that, I will go on to council orals. Mayor Protem Jimenez?
Council orals. My council orals. So today's the first day of Pride Month. And as a proud parent of a queer child, it is really exciting for me to be able to do, to do this for our community. We are hosting our second annual Stride for Pride 5K. The running group that Salvador and I started a couple of years ago, Run Montebello Run, partnered up with the city of Montebello. And this is something, it's become a very beautiful, a beautiful partnership because we have a lot of the neighboring running groups participating. And they've actually been really looking forward to this. Last year, we were able to, to raise money for two different LGBT nonprofits, one of which I ended up going to work for. And I'm thinking that this year, we're going to have to choose another nonprofit. But nevertheless, I am very excited to announce that we are having our second annual Stride for Pride 5K on June 25, starting at 8:00 AM. We will have the event right information on, hopefully the city will share it as soon as we have it ready. Also, we will be having in the city of Montebello for the first time ever, Pride Festival, which was actually initiated by Barney Santos from Boulevard Market. And this is another beautiful partnership with the God is Mercado. No, not the God is Mercado, the Queer Mercado, Boulevard Market. And some of our community members were part of this committee. I'm very excited to be part of this committee. So Eastside Pride is going to be a pride festival held in the downtown area on June 25, after the Stride for Pride, the Stride for Pride. And it will be held from 12 noon till midnight. There will be a drag brunch. DJs, again, the Queer Mercado, if you've never been to the Queer Mercado, it's different vendors with a lot of fun items that they sell. And we're excited to have this. We have some great sponsors. And please keep an eye out for, for this event. And the community, of course, is invited, and I'm sure you're going to see some more announcement promotion during this month. Another thing that I had, oh, so last year, I did ask for a flag, a pride flag, to be, to be waved in front of our city steps. But it, there's a certain process that needs to take place. So we, and we had, we actually, actually did follow up with making sure that we would have this, this flag. And I asked again, and I did reach out to David Sosnowski a couple of weeks ago. We did hang a banner in front of City Hall. And I hope that there's still a way where we can, I don't know, wave the flag and ask for council consensus if we could wave our flag through the remainder, to the rest of Pride Month, as I had requested in 2021. I know there are a couple of things, again, that I can't remember exactly what it was. I don't know if it's Mr. Sosnowski or, the city manager's not here today, of course. The reason, because I, again, it was on me, I think, to also follow up with the city about the flag pole and, not an additional, a policy, yeah.
Yeah, I think we'd have to research to make sure we don't violate any, either local or federal standards or practices for how the, the flags are presented. Yeah, I know a lot of communities who have done this have adopted a, a policy to recognize it and fly flags. I don't know if the city has a, a flag policy or not. I'm seeing shaking heads, so.
I know we can't fly anything under the American flag or the California state flag. We would have to do a third pole, install it, go dig deep, break concrete. And I believe it would be like 100,000 plus, because it's not the same flag pole that you put in your front yard. This is a heavier-duty industrial pole, and I don't know if I'm wrong at 100,000, give or take.
If directed, we could, we could look at, at least conceptually, what it would take to put a, a third flag pole in.
Please, but in the meantime, I would ask if we could go ahead, and I'm not sure if the banner's up there yet.
If we can, is the banner okay instead of the flag?
Well, if the banner is what we can get, again, then, but if...
Director Sosnowski is indicating that it's already...
Oh, thank you, David.
In place.
Thank you. Also, I'd like to acknowledge a couple of our community members, Terry and Lola, who are a beautiful lesbian couple who just became grandmothers two days ago to a beautiful Amelia Rose. And this is, for me, again, as a mother of an LGBT child, a queer child, this is a huge deal for me to make sure, this is, I think it's, it's been a long time. It's been way, it's way past due that we make sure that as people drive through our cities, members of the LGBT community know that this is an inclusive city and that we welcome everyone here. And with that, I...
Mayor Protem, I don't know if the comfort level, but if you would invite your colleagues or your contact individuals, so we can recognize them maybe at the next something through June?
Oh, okay, so yes, I, so Jocelyn, there's a young woman by the name of Jocelyn, and it was actually Jocelyn, my daughter, who sent in messages last year to ask for this, for the pride flag to be placed out in front of City Hall and for us to do, to host a pride event. So yes, I would love to invite them, to recognize them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Bear with me. Before we adjourn, first I'd like to, before we adjourn, I'd like to thank all of you who are watching, those of you attended in person tonight, my colleagues, the directors, our entire staff, for helping us get projects completed, hearing from our residents concerned, just moving forward in a positive light. So thank you all. But I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting in the memory of John Velasco and Gil Espino. We, as a city, experienced their loss these past weeks. Pastor John Velasco, from Hearts of Compassion, our brother in the Lord, friend, giver to all. He was always smiling and laughing and just happy to share blessings. So just watch over us, John. We also lost our good friend Gil Espino, co-founder of the Montebello Reporter. His dedication to the community was never-ending. He supported projects quietly, financially, and covered every event. Our deepest condolences to his fiancee, Maria, and his Montebello reporter partners, Arcus. So if you would please join me in a moment of silence for both. Thank you. God bless you both and may both rest in peace. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. A second from vice versa, or?
Second.
Okay. Okay, it is 7:47, and we adjourned to our regular, our regular next meeting is Wednesday, June 8, at 5:00 PM. Thank you all, have a great night.